Welcome to the Batesville City Council. Moving our city forward, Mayor Rick Gellwalt, City Clerk Denise Johnson, City Attorney Tim Meitzner, and your council members from left to right, Paige Hubbard, Landon Reeves, Scott Fredericks, Brittany Bennett, and from right to left, Fred Crew, Julie Hinkle, Chris Poole, and Rob Roberts. Welcome you to the meeting.
Okay, guys, it's now 5:30, and I'd like to call the meeting order. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Nick Baxter to open us up in prayer.
Okay, if you will, let's pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, loving heavenly Father, I lift a prayer for our city and these who serve in it. I pray for care and consideration for our citizens. I pray for the best well-being for the efforts to build a city on your firm foundation. As always, I pray for those who serve to protect here in Batesville and around the world. Help us to never lose sight of your sacrificial life and love for our eternal life. In the name of Jesus Christ, I pray, amen.
Ms. Johnson, would you please verify the roles?
Yes, sir. Councilmembers Bennett and Reeves are at the table.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the previous two meetings?
No move.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the prepared agenda?
No move.
Second.
Motion of second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda, citizens' comments. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council? Okay, please come forward and state your name and your address or your residence, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Savannah Warren, and I'm going to give you the address of my work, which is 184 North Fifth -- it's in front of you, and I'm going to walk all over my words tonight. It's 184 North Fifth Street. And tonight, I'm here to talk about what we do a little bit and to ask for a streetlight. What you have in front of you is from my boss, and I was going to basically read it word for word, but Mr. Crew asked that I talk about what we do for just a minute. And what we do is we provide basic adult education and ESL to the community for free and confidentially. We also provide a let-to-go program and a language exchange that is every month. That is something that people that are looking to learn Spanish or looking to learn English can get together and have a group conversation. And our let-to-go program is where we send out books and activities every other month, basically like a Dolly Parton program, but every other month, and you get activities with your stuff. And that's free, and that's for anyone who signs up. And we also provide everything from helping people with problems for their driver's license to basic math to financial literacy and computer literacy. And if our students come to us and we can't meet them, we try to set them up with the resources that can. Like, for example, I am trying to help someone get them set up with the right academic resources as well as making sure they have the right resources with the extension office, and then also making sure that they're looking for a church home that they haven't really found, and asking my friends, who do I recommend? And we go out of our way to make sure that they have the support they need to be successful. And what we're asking for today is we're asking for the council to consider putting a streetlight in, in our parking lot. Our parking lot is actually, you can almost see it from right here. And you have a copy of the map in front of you. Every blue dot is where a streetlight currently is, and the red dot is where a pole is that we're asking for a streetlight. The one that is in our parking lot, almost, kind of, on our way, is blocked by a lot of trees, and you can't really see it. The one that's across is across from the parking lot in the old hospital, and it doesn't provide as much light as you would think it would, is the truth. And we're trying to take advantage of the fact that we have a building, that we can have more events and more community things in, but we don't feel like we can have them at night because it's not very safe to get out in the parking lot. And that's what we're asking the council to consider.
Okay, alright.
Do you have any questions for me?
I think we're good.
Alright, thank you very much.
I'll have the council to do a drive-by when it's dark and take a look at everything.
If anybody would like to meet us there at night, I am free to meet you any night there, except for tonight because I have to go to rehearsals.
I got you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Y'all have a great time.
Okay, Police Chief, Mr. John Scarborough, monthly report.
Was there anything else? Any comments from citizens?
Oh, I'm sorry. Anybody else have a comment? Yes, I'm sorry.
Um, no.
I'm sorry.
Sorry about that.
No, that's fine. Yeah, come on with that.
I do wish I would've did what she did. I like it.
Yeah, this is Mr. James Gales, so.
Yeah, please, yeah, take a seat, yeah. Thank you, Councilman. Bringing that up. I didn't want to overlook James out there.
Sorry about that. I feel bad, I'm sorry. Just really quick update on what we're doing. The flyers are getting in, some of them, sorry, I don't have enough because I have to wait for the website to get done to put it on it. But the black flyer there, that's our cleanup cookout that we're getting ready to do. It's a fundraiser for the Batesville High School Band. They're getting ready to go on their annual Disneyland workshop, which is pretty cool because it's not just like, you know, having fun. They're actually going to go into the back of the studios and learn about, you know, production and things there, community service hours for the kids and adults or anybody that needs it. And then what we're going to do is we're cleaning up North Central Avenue right now, and we're going to meet at Maxwell Park at 7:00 at November the 9th. We're getting a pressure washer. We had one company, but they got a little busy, so we're going to get somebody to pressure wash through the bridge right there on North Central Avenue. Sherwin-Williams has given us the paint, or we can do the graffiti. This is bad. But the bank that's actually in Walmart, they're actually helping us out with the extra money for the anti-graffiti coating, and that stuff is really good. I think I told you all last time, we apply it like every two years, and they've been working on it since 2011. So basically, if somebody graffiti's again, we just take a pressure washer and get it off in a couple of seconds, then we're done. Greenway is hooking us up with some weed eaters so we can go down to the bayou and kind of cut the grass down. And then Beautify Batesville is going to try to like maintain that, so like next year, we can do more kayaking and stuff like that, and some night kayaking, you know, and know that we got the snake somewhat down and everything, where it's a little safer. What else are we doing? Oh, and then we actually have a couple of motorcycle groups that are going to come out, and Car Club, they're going to come out and cook for us while we're cleaning. They'll be cooking, and then like around 11-ish, we'll sit and eat and everything. The kids are going to be out there with buckets, the band kids, so if you have friends, family, please tell them to come in, and if they have change in their change list, please throw some, you know, money in there to help the kids out. First Community Bank, Pat Rutterford, she's helping them out, giving the kids some things too. Walmart, they're on board. They're going to give like drinks and things to like help while we're out, you know, working and things like that. A couple of other people, but move on. The other thing we got going on, the reason why we're really wanting to clean up is because we have this gaming gauntlet coming on, and it started out as just like a little thing that a kid, he knew that I was with FanCon and said, hey, I'd like to do a gaming thing here. I was like, okay, well, tell me a little bit about it. And then I just kind of wanted to help my friends out and kind of like make them some money, so it was going to start at Mazzio's and then go to OA Gaming. And now it's became like a really big gaming quest where it's three cities. It's going to be Batesville, Cave City, and Southside, where they're going to go around to these places and play video games to see if they can get to the gauntlet, you know. We're going to do four of them a year, 16 to 21. We're planning on doing that the weekend after Halloween, wherever that falls at, and then the weekend before FanCon. And then we're doing one for adults because there was a lot of 20-something euros that got mad. So we're going to do one for adults, and that's going to be Black Friday weekend because most adults are off that weekend anyway, and then the weekend of FanCon. Because last year at FanCon, when it was over, the Stars and everything, you know, that's worked for them, so when they got done, it was kind of rough to see them like, you know, hey, what do we do? Like Santino from Walking Dead, he's like, hey, Tommy, what are we doing? And there was really nothing to do, so we're hoping to make it where there's something for them to do, because, you know, you don't just make the fans happy, you got to make the other people happy too, so hopefully they can tell their friends, hey, if you ever get a FanCon in Batesville, please go because it's fun, it's nice, the people are cool and everything. And F5 Cookout, one of my LLCs, we're actually hiring, and it says party promoter because I didn't know how else to say it, but basically like this gaming event, since I really don't know gaming, that's what that person would be. So it's not really a party, it's just he would be hosting the gaming quest and everything and, you know, doing all the spots that we're going to. What else was up there? I think that was it on the flyers. Oh, and then for the gaming quest, what looked like the Google, that's the rules to the gaming quest where all the cities are able to like come together and everybody, you know, make a little bit of money and hopefully have a little bit of fun. So that was it there. And please remember, November the 9th at 7:00 a.m., we'll be out down here at Maxwell Park. It should be hopefully a good event, you know, cleaning up and, you know, just making a town a little bit nicer, a little bit cleaner. Alright. One other thing, I try to tell this to everybody because we're working with this other place that helps elderly's out. If you know any elderly, anything that like need like steps or something built, or a ramp or something like that, Bad Boy, they help us out, give us free wood and everything. It's good pine wood, and it's like long 10-foot, two-by-four, so if you know anybody, please, before y'all go like buy it yourself, please let us know, and we'll get things. Like right now, I was just talking to actually Batesville Main Street with Amanda Roberts and Miss Tipp, and we're going to actually use the wood now to actually redo the stage in the pocket park. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate you. Okay, Chief.
Good evening. Of course, I did this report like two weeks ago, so I don't really remember anything on it. I was ahead of myself. We were up a little bit on our call, or down a little bit, I'm sorry. I read it backwards. And then accidents, of course, went up. The rest was about the same, and then incident reports went down. And then everything else is in there that I always put in there. I don't really have anything on it yet on the report unless you guys have questions. But I would like to, I bring this saga up every time I'm up here, that the computers in the cars are working on it and all this other stuff. If everything goes right, the last piece of equipment will be in tomorrow. The guys are going to, all the officers will finish their final training on it tomorrow. If the last piece of equipment comes in, hopefully by the next council meeting, we'll have them all installed up and running. We hope, fingers crossed. We did bring one of the new vehicles tonight for you guys to look at after the meeting if you want to, with the new design that we put on them. We've changed it up a little bit from what we previously had, since we're kind of changing everything. They have one of the guns you guys approved, he'll have one of them out there, stock loaded. So if you guys want to look at it, we have that. Also, if you guys bring, Officer Romero is wearing the new body armor that Bad Boys bought us. They donated money, and we were able to buy new body armor for all the officers. They're going to do, we're going to do a press release next week with Bad Boys about it. We haven't really said much about it because we've kind of kept it quiet, letting them do their press release because they did donate the money to us, which we're grateful for. But that's the new vest, the guys wanted it, several reasons. The comfort level of the outer carrier. Also, there's been studies done, how it's better on the officer's bodies to get some of the weight off of their hips. So we've chosen to go to that vest. It's a little more comfortable for them, and hopefully it'll reduce any injury to them. I'm scared what Brett's going to do.
Hold that hard.
But I'd like to thank the council for approving the ARP money and the other money, the stuff you guys have approved for, since I got fortunate enough to be appointed. The guys are really happy with the moves that we're making, and it's, you know, those guys need to be rewarded for all the hard work they do, and I think they're thrilled with the changes that we're making and the progress we're doing. We're looking to do some stuff after the first year or two, it's going to kind of put us ahead of a lot of departments in the state if it goes well. But I don't have anything else unless you guys have questions.
You have any questions for Chief?
Rob's got one, I know it.
You mentioned in your report, looks like we may miss out on part of our grant reimbursement. Tell us what we're looking at there.
So, there is a, when we applied for the grant, you had a timeframe of when you would have it operational, and we didn't make the timeframe due to equipment not getting to us on time. So we, there was an install fee that they were going to pay that we're probably going to miss out on. We're trying to plead our case with them to give them, to get some grace period on it, but I can't make any promises.
How much are we talking about?
About 750 per unit.
And how many units?
About 23, 24? So, we're still trying to get that rectified, but, you know, I can't promise.
And it was because the equipment wasn't shipped on time?
Well, it was, yes, we, there was some misunderstanding. You know, we ordered the wrong stuff at first, had to send it back, get some other stuff ordered, and it was a learning curve that none of us were prepared for when we started this venture.
Well, I'm glad we got the vest.
Yeah, yeah. Bad Boys was very gracious.
Very gracious, and we will definitely, and you and I, we talked about an open house today, so we're trying, and refresh my memory, what we decided. We talked about it this morning at that meeting, so.
So we're going to try to wait until we get the new uniforms and stuff.
That's right, it was the uniforms, because they're getting new uniforms, so we'd like to, you know, show it all off at that time. And hopefully we can get a lot of our officers there at that same time also, and maybe get a complete photo of all of our officers at one time.
Yes, sir, that's the plan.
So may try to do it, maybe a shift change or something like that. I know it'd be tough to get everybody because.
We'll find a way. And I don't think I said it, so, you know, they're going to work Wednesday. A lot of them are having to come in on their time off just to get this training done. But then next week, they're going to, we're going to have two different classes down at the range. These guys getting qualified and learning these new weapon systems, you know. So these guys have been, they've been cramming a lot of training in since April, and it's been, we've been busy.
And Chief has, joining the State Chiefs Association, and I think you attended that conference as well.
Attended the conference.
So appreciate you taking time to do that.
We learned a lot at the conference, and that's part of the direction we're going to try to go next year.
Okay, appreciate you. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Damon Johnson, City Engineer.
So the first thing is information on speed tables that, for Eagle Mountain, I think there's something more, multiple areas that are involved.
I'm sorry, my bad.
So just a spec sheet on the speed tables that Eagle Mountain is requesting. The second thing is the guaranteed maximum price, kind of the summary, we'll talk about that in a second, for the water treatment plant.
So on the speed table, we'll hit that first, that's kind of the easy. For some reason, the brand, the brand is rubber form, for some reason, that didn't print out on the spec sheet. The Eagle Mountain Homeowners Association, you know, has come to us and asked about that in the past. They have landed on this particular speed table, which I've looked into, I don't have any objections to it, seems like it's going to be easily put down, and if need be, easily They are asking to put one at Aberdeen, on Aberdeen at the boardwalk, and they're asking to put one, have one put somewhere between Woodmont and Island Way on Eagle Mountain. So that's basically after the Y, before the first, somewhere before the first intersection. And so essentially, I think that in order to install something like this, that, just like a stop sign or anything else, that, you know, you guys need to approve that before we went out and did it. So they have committed to pay for the speed tables, they've committed to reimburse the city for our labor, and I don't know if they know this or not, we will convey this, there will need to be some advance warning signs, you know, that will have to be put up, and our expectation would be also that they would cover the expense to purchase and install those signs, if y'all decide to approve that, to put those in, to put these in. So that's pretty much all. Kyle, you know, he wanted to be here tonight, but he had some kind of conflict, so basically, you know, they're kind of wondering what to do, so we decided we'd go ahead and bring it up for him. And so, you know, that's kind of all the information I have on it, and y'all can just give us guidance about your feelings. If you got any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. Just let me know what y'all think about it. They're rubber, they're like a recycled rubber, they don't deform supposedly, that's one of their claims, they don't break up. I mean, I'm sure there's a life expectancy, you know, in maybe 10 years, maybe five, I'm not sure, but I think ultimately Eagle Mountain's homeowner association's goal would be to put out permanent speed bumps if these were deemed to be acceptable once they're put up. But I think we urge them to, hey, let's do temporary first, so that if it becomes very controversial, or the, maybe the homeowners association has missed the mark with the whole group of homeowners out there, that we could remove them, and it's really no harm, no foul. So that's what this is. This is a temporary test, I guess I would say, that they're wanting to put in to see if it'll slow traffic down, if the neighborhood will accept it, and so on.
So you said the property owners association is fully paying for installation, purchase, so on and so forth?
That's right, yes. So they have, yeah, I mean, the communications I've had, and I think the mayor's had some too, you know, that they've made that commitment.
Who will install them?
So they're asking that the city staff install them, so our street department would go out and install them. They have offered that, to reimburse us, to keep up track of our time and our equipment, and that they would reimburse us for that as well. So, you know, their ask has been, hey, we'll cover all the costs, and even Kyle said, committed that he'll even order them. I mean, he's not even asking us to order these. He'll order them, have them delivered to the city yard, and then we can go put them out, when we get an opportunity to put them out.
Do you have any concerns at all, any issues?
I don't know how popular they're going to be.
Due to the people. It's one of the real popular associations to.
Right.
Which is the reason for doing temporary?
Right.
So we can evaluate this.
Right.
And they can evaluate it.
They can evaluate that way, that, and so we need to make sure we get a phone number, so when we get a call from a residence out there, we can give it to the property association.
And they know who their councilman is out there.
Because I think I'd mentioned, when Southside put some in on Luster Drive, I got phone calls on that one right there.
Yeah, that's right.
So that's out of my jurisdiction, so.
But, yeah. If y'all are willing to let it move forward, I think we do need a motion.
I would make a motion for approval of the purchase installation to be reimbursed by the Eagle Mountain Property Owners Association.
Second. Having a motion of second, any further discussion? Not? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay, alright, Damon.
Okay, so the next item I handed out to you guys is a front and back, it's, or actually it's two, maybe, I don't know if it's front and back.
Two pages.
But, so essentially, this is the, what we call the guaranteed maximum price on the water treatment plant project. So the first page just kind of gives a summary of the total cost, and then the second page shows the different scopes of work and the contractors that have been chosen for those scopes of works. Now, these two pieces of paper just represent, just the summary. We have a huge spreadsheet and a lot more supporting documentation to this, and any of you guys are welcome to, you know, I can get it to you if you want it. The short, so we have sent this to ANRD, who's our funding agency. You know, if you all remember, we've been approved for $110 million loan, which we are paying back with a one-cent sales tax that we have on the books currently. We're already collecting it, even though we haven't borrowed the money yet, we're already collecting it, which is fantastic. That'll help us pay it back faster. And this is, you know, the big, you know, the big punchline, I guess, at the bottom is where it says total guaranteed maximum price is 99 million, I need to bring my glasses, So that's not a how much it will cost, that's a maximum price with the current scope of work. So if the scope doesn't change, this is the most it will cost. If you see there, there are a few things lined out, and really kind of some of the biggest are the contingency. We did normal, like a 3% or 4% contingency is kind of what you shoot for, if you do the math, that's 7% contingency. And we did that because we had a few contractors that were, that came in and left a lot of money on the table, were maybe a couple million dollars lower than the next closest bidder. We went back to those bidders, those contractors, gave them an opportunity to withdraw their bid, to review and withdraw if they felt like they'd made a mistake. We, neither one of them chose to do that. And then we followed up with, let's go through your bid with you to be sure you're supplying the properly-spect equipment and, you know, everything with your bid. Both companies who were kind of a little, what I might even say, a little uncomfortably low, have stood behind their bids. We've checked it, they've checked it, we've done some kind of high-level checking with them in coordination. They've gone back to their bonding companies, had their bonding companies check them, and they are very comfortable. They say they have good bids, they don't know why everybody else is so high. So we've chosen them, but just in case, as a little bit of a parachute, you might say, we added some extra contingency so that if there was a problem, if we had to, if one of those contractors could not fulfill their obligations, we could, I mean, of course, the bonding company would get involved, but it's still, it's a big mess, and if there's a way we could maybe help them get over the hump or deal with a mistake, we've got a little extra contingency in there. So, I mean, of course, the goal is to build the project and not spend a dollar of that contingency. That's not a reality, we will spend some, but I hope these guys that we put a little extra money in there for do their job, they fulfill their contracts at the price that they gave us, and then we don't need to use any of it for that. And so I just want you to understand that the price tag is, basically, Tom gives us, they're obligated to build the plant for that amount of money or less. And so any amount of less, the city saves, is savings, we just don't spend it. And there are some items that are put in there as, oh, how do, like as allowances instead of a hard number, because like asphalt, for example, the price of asphalt in three years when we actually do the paving may be different than today. So we kind of have a number, we know, we've talked to the asphalt providers, we know how much they would charge us today, but, you know, maybe we don't have a hard number in there because it might be different in three years, and might be higher. I mean, generally, things are going up, you know, testing, how much testing has to be done. There's some things that are in there as allowances, so the hope is we also don't spend that whole allowance, you know, we'll spend what's needed and then not what's not needed. It's an uncomfortably high number, but it's just the reality of the market right now. We had a large amount of bidders, we were very happy. I mean, some of the scopes, we had six or seven bidders, which, that's a lot. Usually, we're used to seeing three or maybe four. So we had good competition. What you've shown is actually getting some bids in that were kind of uncomfortably low, you know. People were really, had their pencils sharp, I guess, from their opinion, or really trying to give us a good price. So, you know, the original price tag was about 65 when we started the design, the final design, and that was late '20, early '21. You know, I've gone back and looked at inflation. Again, we kind of talked about this once before, once you put the heavy construction inflation number to that number, you get pretty close to this number. So, I mean, the reality is the engineering estimates of 65 million weren't terribly off, they were just done at a time before we've kind of had some of this kind of crazy inflation we've had the last three years. So it just is what it is. If y'all have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Do we need to make any type of motion or anything?
So we will have to, so we will, we are preparing to do our loan closing with So we, we will have to, so we will, we are preparing to do our loan closing with Arkansas Natural Resources. You know, if y'all remember at the, maybe it was the last or the meeting before Ryan Bowman was here, and he, we passed that, the bond ordinance. On October 22nd will be the, the deadline when, when the, the waiting period is expired from the bond ordinance, and we will be able to do a loan closing with A N R, A N R D. They changed their initials a little. We have to close before November 1st in order to retain our 1.75% interest rate, which is a huge thing. And that's our government subsidy. You know, when people say, we need to go get grants for this project, well, the grant is we're getting to borrow money at 1.75% instead of at seven and a half or eight in the open market.
I got the papers in the mail, by the way, yesterday.
What's that?
Loan closing papers.
Good, okay. And so, yes, A N R D will want to see the minutes where the council has approved to move forward with this project. So we will need a motion and acceptance if y'all are ready to do that. We will need that, either this meeting or the next meeting. So, I mean, it's, there's a lot to digest there. If y'all want to wait till next meeting, I'm fine with that. When, you know, we can, I can ask questions, answer questions, or do whatever y'all, y'all need between now and then.
Thinking of those bidders that you said were perhaps uncomfortably low, I understand that they, they have bonding companies, but, and I'm showing my ignorance, I really don't know how this works, but is there any sort of due diligence that's done on those bonding companies, or any sort of rating that we can look at to make sure that they're solvent enough where if they have to write a big check, that we're not going to be surprised at?
Well, the, I mean, in this field, mo, there's only a handful of bonding companies, and most of them are very large, like corporations. There, there has been an issue with one bonding company due to the job in South Arkansas or Central Arkansas. Kind of, they've kind of pulled back a little. I can double-check that, who the bonding companies are. But if you'd like, and be sure that they're, you know, like you said, their quality, almost everybody uses the same handful of companies. And so it's kind of, you know, there's maybe three or four, maybe five nowadays. There used to be two 15 or 25 years ago, but, but yeah.
But you don't need this done before the 22nd closing? You don't need a motion before the 22nd closing?
No, we've already presented a letter to them that said if, if, once we do the loan closing, that we will be able to follow up with. I mean, it might be better if we could give it to them before the loan closing, but I don't think it's required. So, I mean, it's really up to y'all. I don't want y'all to feel pressured. I have, we haven't, you know, had a lot of opportunity to go back and forth, discuss or anything if y'all feel like you need, need more information. It's a big project, so I just, you know, want to give y'all plenty of opportunity to ask me questions or get whatever information you want, if y'all feel the need.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions for Damon? Do you have anything else, Damon, other than that?
I mean, as far as just regular operations in the city, things are going fairly well. I don't have anything big to report. We have been chasing kind of anomaly in our water system that Councilman Poole has been able to experience firsthand. We do think we found the problem. We have a, a valve that's supposed to slow close at, at the high-service pump station, and we've recognized and realized when we're turning that pump off that's associated with that, that it's slamming closed and causing some interesting things to happen in the system. It's just a, a testament to, it's just worn out. It's, it's 60-something years old, and, you know, it's, we, we're going to change operationally how we do things. I mean, it was number one, so it's been the primary, first one on, last one off. We're going to change how we do operationally, but some of these things, you know, I think we're going to solve that problem, but it will be completely solved once we have a modern facility that can, we can run with VFDs and we don't have to worry about turning pumps on. Right now, the pumps either on or off. And with, with the new stuff, they will be run with a VFD, which means it can run at, I don't know what the bottom line will be, but let's say it can run at 30%, depending on the pump, that rating up to 100%. So you can do, have a lot of control with the system instead of off or on, you know? And so it changes things. It'll, it'll make us have better waters. I mean, we already have good water supply, but it'll make it be a little more smoother and less apt if we occasionally cause a little bit of water hammer that may, you know, cause somebody to lose water pressure for two or three or four or five minutes, so, you know.
Or air in the lines?
Or air in the lines, right. Some of those kind of things that pop up.
Any estimate of when we would expect to see, not the final solution, of course, but the interim?
The interim solution is being, is implemented already.
Okay.
And so we will, and, because it's just operation, like how we're turning pumps on, different orders and timing. And so, yes, we feel like we should be seeing a resolution of that now.
Okay.
If you don't, let us, let me know.
Okay.
If you have an experience similar to what you've been having, just let us know that the date and time is-
Okay.
So we can go back and look and see exactly what's happening at that, that moment.
Got you.
I don't really have anything else to report. We continue to work on the, on the parts project. It is, we've done some pretty major value engineering in the last few weeks. We continue to have meetings. We got one tomorrow to, to look at some certain components of the project. I feel like by the end of the year, the, the project scope will be well-defined and we will be within budget. It may take us, it may take us through the month of November to get there, but I think, I think we're going to get there. Anything else?
Thank you, Damon.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just, I, I know on this guaranteed maximum bid, I know that we have some time, but I also know dealing with lenders is not always a good thing. If we have questions about this, fine, we can put it off. But if we don't, I would rather see us approve it now as opposed to playing with fire for some crazy reason and take a chance of jeopardizing that, that, that interest rate.
Okay.
I agree.
I agree, I agree.
So if, if that's the consensus, I would make a motion for its approval now.
Second.
Go ahead.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. I think the ayes have it. Opposed, like sign. Let me go ahead and put that out there. Thank you, everybody's pretty strong on that, so.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I do appreciate Damon's work on this, because I'm telling you, it's a, it's a huge project, and it has taken a lot of his time in combing through all of this and all the details, so. And I think our contractors, I think we've really got a good, good contractor on this as well as our engineers, so it's a, it's a biggie, guys. But at the end of the day, we're going to see the results in about three years. It's going to take care of our community for many years. Okay, let's move on. Chief McCollum, fire chief?
How are y'all doing?
Good.
Oh, I guess we can start with the normal stuff every, every week or month thing. We had 54 calls. Five of those were structural fires, two vehicle fires, five medical assists, one rescue run, had seven false alarms, four good intense. We only done five inspections, but the reason is, is because we doubled up on them through the summer so that we could, we wouldn't be out in the ice and snow when that, when that happens. Had a haz, one hazmat, grass fire, and three gas leaks. Had 378 hours total training. That's basically what we did last month. We got our results back. I know that we've been talking about this ISO thing. We got our results back on the ISO. We are going to retain a Class II fire rating. Really, I'm really happy with that. We, an 80 is the smallest grade that you can make and still be a Class II, and we had an 80.45. So we just got there by the skin of our teeth. Let's see, we went to Eagle Mountain School, fought that fire. And, and the good thing, I'm going to have to take my hat off because we had the guys on duty, which is four, and then we had six people show up. So we did that with 10 people. So that's pretty good. We pump tested all the trucks, everything passed. Ladder tested our big truck, the platform truck. It was, it failed, and it was what they call a Class 1 failure. Part of the suspension had come loose under the truck, but he let me call the shop, and they came and fixed the problem, and, and they went ahead and passed it at that point. So it, it passed. Let's see. We got ladder one back in, in business. It's been down since July. The, the truck is so old that you can't buy parts for it anymore. Jamie worked on it. He said it's probably going to be the last set of brakes we ever put on that truck because you can't buy them anymore.
How old is the truck?
That's good, sorry.
How old is the truck?
2007. So, yeah, it's, it's getting there. Let's see. It went to Eagle Mountain after the fire. Eagle Mountain School invited us to come and, and do a chat, door-opening thing with them, and we did that, and we opened door for the kids coming in, and they give us stacks of thank you letters, and it was, it was really heartwarming. It made us appreciate, you know, that, or let them, let us know that they appreciated us. The Batesville Pioneer football team has to do so many hours of community service. I don't know if y'all is aware of that. They actually came and, and Coach Morrow asked, asked me if he could come and wash our fire trucks one day. So we, they came and did that for their community service, which is pretty good. We do, I don't know if y'all is aware of this, every year we do a, we give every elementary kid from, from K through 5th grade, we give them fire safety material. All the, or not all the business owners, but a lot of the business owners in town, they donate to this. And we buy books, that's where we get our little fire helmets that we give the kids and stuff like that, and coloring books and sticker books and stuff like that. But every student in the Batesville School District, from kindergarten to 5th grade, gets some material, books and stuff. So we do that every year. But that, we did that this month because it's Fire Prevention Month. Sulfur Rock School invited us to come and bring a truck, do a little mercy services appreciation thing. We took a truck over there and showed them. Thursday, if y'all is not busy, go by Colton's. We're going to be doing a shop with a hero where we do it for, I think it's Special Olympics. The firemen, police officers, stuff like that, will be doing a, they wait on tables and stuff. It's just fundraiser thing, and the, and the waitresses actually donate their tips to this. So we, we win, we get quite a bit of money every year for that. We're going to be down on Main Street doing trick-or-treat, thanks, or Halloween, so come see us. We, we do the kids, do all that. But the ISO rating, I'll give you an example. That right there is what, what they give us to go over to, to tell us what our fire rating is. It's, it's just unreal. They go through dispatch, they go through the water department. They stood up, I mean, really helped us a bunch. They probably pulled us through it. Just everybody chipped in on it. So it's, it's not a Batesville fire effort, it's a, it's a total city employee effort on this ISO thing. Sure is, so. But that's it.
Any questions for chief? Congratulations on the two fire rating, and, and I know that Batesville School District is very appreciative of you guys' quick response, and they're also very thankful for the gentleman who found it that night, Smoker, and could, it could have been, could have been bad.
The milkman. They actually, another little thing, they, she called me and asked me just a second ago, they're bringing food to the firehouse, Eagle Mountain teachers are, so they're, they're feeding the firemen today for appreciation, so that was kind of a good thing.
Very good, all right.
Thank y'all very much.
Okay, next on the agenda is to consider the levy of taxes for the year 2024 payable in 2025. The current millage is five mills from the City General Fund and one mill for Fireman's Pension Fund. Is there a motion to set the millage as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Has a motion in second. Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay, next on the agenda is to consider a resolution to amend the Batesville Comprehensive Plan at the end of Dogwood Drive. And I, I know that all of this has gone through, am I correct, through planning and zoning these next few ordinances and resolutions that we have? Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
I will.
Is there a motion to read the resolution by title only?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. Okay, council, please cast your votes.
Motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Meissen?
Yes, sir. Resolution amending the Batesville Comprehensive Plan at the end of Dogwood Drive East.
Any further discussion? Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Have a motion in second. Council, please cast your votes. Okay, next on the agenda is to consider an ordinance to amend the Batesville zoning district's map on behalf of White River Independent Living LLC located at the end of Dogwood Drive East from C1 to R2. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
I will.
Is there a motion to read the ordinance?
Hang on a minute here. What's going on? I see them voting. Okay, I'll just leave it there. Who introduced, I'm sorry, Chris?
Mr. Poole. Okay, is there a motion to read the ordinance by title only?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. Please cast your votes. Okay, Mr. Meissen?
Sir, an ordinance to amend the Batesville zoning district map and for other purposes.
Okay, any further discussion? Is there a motion to spin the rules and read the ordinance for the second and third readings by title only?
So moved.
Is there a, we had a second, I'm sorry.
Are we moving to read it by title only or to waive the second and third readings?
Yeah. Yeah. Is there a motion to spin the rules and read the ordinance for the second and third readings?
Well, depends on how you, how you want to do it.
Isn't that not what we typically do?
We don't read it, we just waive the readings normally.
Okay.
That was probably the same one from-
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that was, yeah.
Okay, yeah, all right, sorry for that.
No, that's fine, that's why, that's why I, I was reading it the way it was on our, I think, when Ryan Bowman came here.
When Ryan, he makes us read it every time.
Yeah, that language got mixed in there, so.
Okay.
So, yeah, just waive the re-
Yeah, by title only, yeah. Okay. So council cast, council cast your votes.
Motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Meissen?
I guess I lost that one. Are we on the second one?
Yeah, I think we're just waiving the readings altogether.
Is this the second one or the one I just?
Yeah, we've already read it.
Is there one?
So we're waiving this.
We're just waiving the second and third readings.
Waiving the second and third reading, yeah. Okay, yeah, there we go, there we go. Okay, is there a motion?
Y'all votes, yeah, that's it.
Yeah, we got it. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion in second. Council, please cast your votes. Okay, next on the agenda is to consider an ordinance to amend the Batesville zoning district map from R2 to C1 on behalf of Mr. Brian Kimmer. The property is located on North Central Avenue from West Chestnut Street to West Carter Street. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
I will.
Okay, is there a motion to read the ordinance for the first reading by title only?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion in second.
Motion carries.
Sir, what's that, what's that one?
I just wanted to read me, not to read.
All right, Mr. Meissen?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend the Batesville zoning district map and for other purposes.
I didn't even get who made that motion.
Yeah, who made that motion?
Scott.
Scott, and who seconded? Okay. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, any further discussion? Okay, is there a motion to suspend the rules and waive ordinance for the second and third readings?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion to second, all in favor?
No.
No, I'm sorry, council, cast your votes.
We've done this before. Motion carries.
Yeah, you couldn't tell it, but I mean, I'll be. Okay, Mr. Meissen?
He didn't have to read it.
He doesn't have to. Sorry. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion to second, please cast your votes.
Motion carries.
Okay, let's see if we can make it through the last one here. Okay, next on the agenda is to consider an ordinance to amend the Batesville zoning district map from R1 to C1 due to the lack of an ordinance from 1984 not being correctly entered into the official zoning district's map. The property is a portion of the Ball's second addition. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
I will.
Is there a motion to read the ordinance for the first reading by title only?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, okay, council, please cast your votes.
Motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Meissen?
Yes, sir, an ordinance to amend the Batesville zoning district maps and for other purposes.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, is there a motion to suspend the rules and waive ordinance for the second, third readings?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second, okay, council, please cast your votes.
Motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Meissen, read the ordinance, no, I'm sorry, I'm reading, I'm reading the old notes here again. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion to second, please cast your votes. Now, don't tell me how to get off script now, the script, the script's wrong up here.
It's my fault.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, that's fine, yeah, appreciate that. I've always been saying, well, you got off the script, but I didn't deny it, I stuck with it, so. Okay, let's move on and of course the financials for 2024. If you have any questions or comments, don't hesitate to give myself or Ms. Johnson a call. Next is mayor comments. One thing, let's see, our next meeting is on October the 29th. It'll be two weeks from tonight. Also, I need to seek a permission from the council. We are looking, we have another developer. I cannot say, this is confidential, but it's looking at that 2.8 acres in front of Vital Link. We did have a hotel, you know, to looked at it and made the offer of acceptance and we do have another group looking at it. It's, it's, it's either a hotel or a, a restaurant is basically where we're at. Cannot give you any types of names or anything like that, but what I would like to do is get the council's approval to negotiate a, a price for the, the piece of land from that developer.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion to second, any other discussions? Not, all in favor of giving my, myself the ability to go and visit with the developer, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Okay, next thing, I'm going to give you a quick kind of rundown on the sheltered workshop moving together. We're having carpet laid right now in the offices. Actually, we did have a couple runs of carpet from our community center that we did save and so I had, had not, went over there yesterday and forgot my keys, so I did not get a chance to go in. Now our biggest, we're finishing up the fine details, but one thing is that, you know, we've had to bring this building up to code and so the suppression system on the stove. And like I said, those things are, they're, they're expensive. So we've got a $25,000 and a $28,000 estimate on it, so just for that. So that's probably the highest ticketed item that we've had to put in there, but it's going to be up to code. And their old facility was not, since they're moving. But anyway, it's going to be a nice facility and it's, hopefully, if anybody wants to take a look and go over there and look at it, let me know and I'll be glad to take you to look at the deal. So hopefully, and we're trying, they have to, since they're going to move, they also have to get the blessing of the state, so they have to come in and do their own inspections. I know we've had, our employees have helped a lot. Billy Quarter has facilitated this, done a wonderful job. We've had Mark Williams from the Water Department who has helped us and saved us a great amount of money for the plumbing, but it's totally a different place than when we walked in it. So they're going to have a really nice facility and so looking forward to getting, getting them moved. And when we do move, I'm going to try to get ahold of John 316th and see if we can maybe get a hand for them to come in and help them move. They need to move maybe in one day or something, so they will not be down. So maybe we can get that over at the weekend or something. Okay, liaison reports. Okay, council comments, Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Fredericks?
None.
Ms. Hinkle?
None.
Ms. Hubbard?
None.
Mr. Krueg?
None.
Mr. Poole?
I was going to mention a street light request, or actually a report of one, and I've got a couple of aims in saying this. A resident reached out about a street light that wasn't working and was wanting to try to get that corrected. And I think there was a little bit of confusion about whether it was a private light or a street light and there was some confusion by the fact that there wasn't a number on the light and all. And so I think we've got all that sorted out, but given the fact that that was some confusion, I wanted to mention it so we could continue to follow it and try to get it corrected. It's at 3233, I'm sorry, Peggy Street. But anyway, the other aim though that I had in that was just to brag on the text my gov feature because I used that once the person had reached out and I kind of went and confirmed it. I used that and just reported it through that and with it, just a little while, they had called me back from the city to get some more information because again, it didn't have the number and it was unusual. So I encourage the citizens, I've used it one other time as well for a limb in a street, in my street actually, and, and just a little while, the limb was gone. So I assumed that the city came and got it, so that works really well and I want to.
It's good for after hours because you forget, you don't, you don't do it right then.
Exactly, well, and it's hard to get somebody sometimes on the phone and that's not a criticism of the city yard, I get it. So it just, it works really well and I've been pleased with it both times that I've used it. And so I want to commend the, the tool and commend the folks who are running that, I appreciate it.
I used it this morning, works really well.
Good, good, good to know, is that it?
That's it.
Mr. Roberts?
None.
Okay, seemed like there was one other thing I was going to mention. I know we are looking at the district court, I mean, the fine money and so I know council member Chris Poole was on the last committee, so I think I'm going to get Mr. Poole and Mr. Meissen together because we're trying to negotiate and come with a fair price. So hopefully we can get that, you guys can get back with me and I can get with the judge and hopefully we can move, move forward on that. I know there has been some changes also in how we pay the district judge, but we'll also get you two connected on that. One other thing is I probably need to get maybe some type of a committee. I know it's budget time and everything, just the evaluation of, I know we were during the budget process, but we were also trying to get our budget and everything fixed or, so we can present it to you guys. So we're working, working on that. I think you guys, all three of you now are keying those in, so we'll try to hopefully get that thing in the next, hopefully by what, December 1st maybe?
Oh, to adopt?
Well, no, not to adopt, but ready to present to the council.
Oh, well, hopefully.
Yeah, so anyway, we still got a lot, we still have a lot of work to do because we have to call every one of our department heads in. And, but one other thing I would like to do is maybe ask for a committee. Is my time up now? I'd like for a committee to, it's been one hour, it's 6:30, so I'm trying to get this thing in. But to review the elected officials' salary and I would like maybe to get my bankers and my engineer to maybe serve on that committee. Maybe Mr. Rob Roberts and Ms. Julie and Mr. Chris Poole. If you guys be willing to, to serve on that and we'll, we'll try to get with you.
Sure.
On that, get you all the information that you may need. So anyway, all right, anything else for the good of the city before we dismiss?
Thank goodness you got the nursery knocked down.
Okay, well, I have to, I have to give the kudos to our, our gentleman, I think Billy Quarter and Jason Jones and probably some of the city, the city crew did that. So I was out of town last week at the Parks Camp, Conference. Guys, I really saw a lot of cool things, but we can't afford them. But anyway, it was a good trip, thank you for giving me that opportunity to go and attend that. Really, really unique, we did, it was a good learning curve as well on a lot of this new park since we're moving forward on it. So don't have any other business, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Come in.
Second.
A motion to second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Don't relax.
This concludes our meeting tonight. The mayor and city council thanks you for tuning into the meeting. Our air times are Monday at 7:00 PM, Thursday at 6:00 PM, Friday 11:30 AM and all other days 4:00 PM. Again, our city council says thank you and good night.